Been doing this.
So what do you do with that? Drink and have parties?
Um, there's some really good workshops.
Other?
I don't wanna send it to Jim Kowski, let's sure email. J J.
My email?
Mm-hmm.
Jim Johnson, M Q T.
Jim, all spelled out.
Jim Johnson, all spelled out. M Q T.
I couldn't think so.
Jim Johnson, M Q T, Gmail, okay, watch.
Gmail.
Let's see, I should have Danny's, cuz he sent me stuff.
D Ferraro.
D A J Ferraro at Gmail.
D A J.
Yeah, Dash Ferraro.
D A J.
Joseph.
And?
My confirmation.
S Hakenin?
S Hakenin, okay.
Uh, at U P H P dot com.
S H E?
E I.
I.
K K I.
K K I.
N E N. At U P H P dot com.
Okay. Hopefully, I did it right. I used to have Bethany's.
It's probably in here, I'll find it. The one that Jason sent to us.
Well, I just have Bethany's at Range Bane, so.
I think she's got a Gmail.
Bethany J Cody at Gmail.
B E T H A N N A?
No, B E T H A N Y.
A N Y.
J C O D Y. At Gmail.
Wait, I got last Bethany.
J Cody.
J O D Y. At Gmail?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. You don't wanna do?
Washington, visiting my daughter.
Do you wanna? You've already got it, if you don't wanna.
Uh, I don't think I get the same email that you guys do, I was gonna bring it up tonight, but yeah, send it to me, to Jason McCarthy at Market downtown.
I got, I think I got it.
It's really, it's got a lot of trees, and he's got, he's got all the different pages of the Puget Sun.
Okay. All it is, is, yeah, it's just like.
Is it the brochures?
It's so late to their site.
It really does.
Don't tell them.
They'll figure it out, they.
I've got that here.
Yeah, I know, yeah, yeah, I know.
And it's very, you know, all up and down the coast, it's, it's important.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Tacoma to Seattle.
We'll see what you get.
Is this on, Jase?
Yeah.
Uh-huh.
Okay. Alright, let's, uh, call the Wednesday, January eleventh, twenty twenty-three, Planning Commission meeting to order at seven o'clock, and we'll start out, we'll throw a call.
Steve Hakenin, Lake Enchantment. Dennis Ferraro, Eagles Nest Road.
Jim Johnson, White Oak Drive.
Linda Winslow, Norwood Street.
Jason McCarthy, Planning and Zoning of my street.
And Bethany Cody is excused because she had to go home with the kids because her power was out.
Yep, never know what those kids are gonna do in the power cell.
Nope. Okay, so let's head right over to the election of officers. So.
Yep, we need a chair, vice chair, and secretary at the planning commission level.
I make a motion to nominate, I guess that's the proper way, right, nominate Jim Johnson to be the chair.
Second.
Thank you. Um, any discussion?
You're gonna bang up job, Jim.
Thanks.
Six thankless. And you're doing a good job.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Background in the, in the community, and the knowledge of different things that I think is still essential, and I really appreciate your guidance.
Thank you, I appreciate it also, and if there's ever anything you don't like, let me know too.
Well, let's see.
Okay, we don't need a roll call vote, do we?
Just, uh, any discussion?
I said that.
None, okay, yep, all in favor.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright. Okay. Um, vice chair?
I would nominate Danny Ferraro for vice chair.
Second?
Me. I'm second.
Okay. Um, any discussion?
I'm happy to serve as your vice.
Okay.
To be your vice.
It's the only vice I have.
I don't know, we'll find out.
I will ask Tony.
No, don't ask her. Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. Secretary?
I would nominate Bethany Cody.
There you go.
I told her if she left, you know, it was election opposite.
Second? Okay. Any discussion? Oh wait, Bethany's texting me, hold on a sec. She won't accept the secretary.
Too late.
Too late.
Too late, Bethany, alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Excellent.
Easy. So, approval of the agenda? Not much there, so.
Move to approve?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Alright, opposed? Okay. And that's from the previous meeting, December fourteenth, twenty twenty-two. Way last year.
I took it easy on Miss C S O.
Right, oh, you just spelled it?
No, I just took it easy on her comments, I just made a general statement that she was in favor of it, as long as it, uh, the spirit of the, um, sustainably or environmentally situated.
Your, your Sergeant at Arms comment to her was appreciated, it calmed her down, I think. Uh, I have a, I have a couple amendments to the minutes though.
Sure.
Suggest, if we look to, uh, planning and zoning report, which Jason made, uh, I, I disagree that nothing substantial was reported, uh, in fact, I think something very substantial was reported. I think, I'm looking at the notes, and, uh, as I recall, you indicated you had some preliminary discussion with the development group who did the, uh, the mixed unit housing.
Renovare.
Renovare, right. And you indicated that you had discussed with them the possibility of a development at the five acre parcel at Sherwood Park.
Yep.
You also indicated that they were interested, and even indicated they might be able to provide forty-eight units.
Yes, that's great.
And then even, almost as important as that, was your comment that you believe that the township board would support such a effort.
Yeah, one of the reasons I, I didn't put that in there, Danny, is just because it's not really public yet, and didn't wanna spoil anything, um, there's things that I do convey to the planning commission that I don't, uh, you know, put out for press release or anything like that, you know?
Okay.
But if, I'm happy to amend, um,
well, if.
Did include the potential residential development and reuse of a former site.
If you do not wanna name the particular developer, that's fine, but I think that.
Okay.
That, um.
I can surmise that, yeah.
Yeah, and, so the, I guess it's important to me because the township board now is sharing their minutes with us, and I think it'd be important for them, for sharing our, are we sharing our minutes with them?
Yes.
Okay, so then, this'll kinda reinforce this concept that, you know, we discussed this in terms of Sherwood Park, that five acre parcel.
Yep.
So, if you could put that in?
Sure.
Okay, do I need to make a motion, or we?
No, just as amended would be.
Okay, um, the second amendment that I, I'd like to make is, uh, regarding the, uh, offer by, uh, the discussion that we had regarding the offer by Superior Watershed Partnership with respect to acquiring eleven acre parcel on the lake shore at one hundred Eagles Nest Road, I appreciated your comment and your, your information that it had already been referred to the recreation committee, and that there was a deadline of February first for them to submit a plan to the D N R. They could amend that five-year plan to include this project, it was a possibility, so everything was very iffy, but, uh, and, so I was, I was even gonna make a motion that we, uh, uh, recommend this to the township, but hearing what you advised, I didn't make any motion, but subsequent, and I can't remember when the township had their last meeting, was it before? Uh, I meant, they probably had a meeting tonight, right?
Nope.
They did, okay, but they had another meeting either on the same Wednesday we had ours last time, right?
Uh, no, they meet on the first and second.
So the third.
First and third.
First and third, okay, so they had a meeting subsequent to our last meeting. That meeting was reported in the press, and it, the story was, or the story that was reported from that meeting was that the owner of the Wee property had, uh, offered to sell this relatively barren piece of property to the township for a million four, and that Lynn commented that this was a little too rich for the township's blood, but then, surprising me, was the comment by Ernie Johnson, who instructed, uh, John Kengas to sit down with the developer or the owner to see if they could carve out a parcel or two for recreational purposes. So, my, my thought is, I mean, if you're gonna, if the township was even considering, especially, uh, Mr. Johnson, I think he tosses nickels around like manhole covers, so, uh, you know, for him to make that comment, indicated to me maybe perhaps the township is interested in doing, uh, recreational acquisition. And I would certainly think that, uh, acreage on the lake shore would be much more desirable than that property. So anyway, I just would like to amend this, the, the comment, cuz I raised that during the other comment period by commissioners.
Okay.
So I'd like, if you could, if, uh, maybe add that there was discussion about the, uh, offer of Superior Watershed Partnership to assist the township in potentially acquiring, uh, uh, lake shore acreage for recreational purposes on Eagles Nest Road, and that the matter had already been referred to the recreation committee.
Yeah.
Okay?
So, um, and I have no problem adding that, so things moved pretty quickly, and that property has now been taken off.
Well, it's interesting, they took off, that property, that eleven acres consisted of three parcels. The parcel that was left on, it's still for sale, there's only two pick, two pieces that have been removed, and I believe the two pieces that have been removed are the pieces that probably are pretty much undeveloped, maybe because of the, the, the wetness, but I don't know for sure, cuz I, I couldn't find anything on the internet. But parcel number three is still for sale.
For five hundred thousand, yeah?
No, it's not, that was, actually it was four ninety-nine for eleven acres, now it's, uh, two ninety-nine for three point eight acres. And from the pictures on the internet, that three point eight acres already has a well-worn and well-used path from Eagles Nest Road down to the beach, and that has been used by, it's just historically been used by people on Eagles Nest Road, I mean, even before I got there five years ago, it was still, it was used. So anyway, I don't know.
It's news to me.
Well, it is, if you look up Golosek is the one that, uh, that lists the property.
Yeah, I met with Carl Linquist today, uh.
Oh, you did?
Yeah.
Cuz I had sent Carl an email telling him, you know, cuz he sent me an email saying, oh, bummer, it's off the market, but I sent him a reply, saying, well, wait a minute.
I'll check into that tomorrow, for sure.
Yeah, so anyway, I, if you put something in the minutes about that, I'd appreciate it, because I think that would also, I, I also wanted to let the township board know that, you know, we're, we're as a planning commission, are interested in that kind of stuff, and that, who knows, this might.
Will the township own it?
Well, the township would own it, the Superior Watershed Partnership would manage it, it would be paid for by Michigan Natural Resources Trust Fund grant, this is all idealist, ideal, you know, the ideal outcome, and of course, there's a matching that Jason mentioned, but it's certainly less of a match now than it. And even if it's not contiguous with the other two parcels, and I understand the other two parcels, the whole, the whole thing is owned by the Clark family.
Yeah, I'll call Jim tomorrow.
Yeah, and they got all kinds of money anyway, so maybe they'll be interested in donating something, doing something philanthropic with the other two, uh, pieces of, anyway, if you could make some.
Sure, yeah, I always like to get the story straight.
Okay.
That'd be a nice spot, like for camping, or, you know, if you put a little campground in there that the township owned, and.
Well, what's nice about it, what's nice about it is.
The neighbors would go crazy.
No, no, but what's nice about it is that.
Danny, he won't care.
No, but the, the, the right, either right adjacent to that piece that's still on there, or separate, one, two pieces that are the wetlands, is seventeen acres that the Superior Watershed Partnership owns, and they're gonna, in the summer, coming summer, they're gonna be building, uh.
Campground?
No, boardwalks to get from that parking lot, which they own, right there, that where the old road used to go where Eagles Nest Road, where they made a parking lot.
Right, they're getting there.
Anyway, they're gonna have, uh, boardwalks from there, so people can access the beach from that area, you know?
Are there trails in there now, or they have to cut it all out, or?
Uh, there are some trails, well, there's a trail right from the piece that I was talking about, right from Eagles Nest Road, right down to the beach, and then, of course, once you get to the beach, that's owned by everybody, so you could go down then to the Eagles Nest Community Forest. You know what I'm saying, so it would be a link. Anyway, just a thought.
Love to talk to them about their parking lot, too, I'm sure.
Yeah, I'm pretty sure they own that, I'm pretty sure Carl said they own.
Yeah, it's part of the parcel, I'm just talking about, uh, improvements in
Okay.
Parking lot design, yeah.
Okay, so with that, I, I would, you know, make a motion to approve the minutes as amended?
Are you, you making a motion, or you just, uh, amending it? Cause you just made a motion, do, I don't think we need a motion for that, do we?
For the meeting minutes?
Just to, just to approve the minutes.
Oh, oh, that's, oh, I thought, I thought you were doing it to amend it, okay.
That's a neat word, he's, Jason's gonna dig that.
I thought we already had a motion.
Yeah.
On the floor. But, okay. Is there support?
Second.
Alright, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. Alright, uh, public comment? Which, we have no public here right now, so let's go to new business. Six A Housing Work Session, one discussion.
Uh, so, the way I wanted to frame this is, as a planner, as planners, try to understand demographics and why things happen, or how we got to where we're at, especially with the, the workforce housing issue, or, um, that, um, that subject. So, both Eric and I, I put together the staff report for housing, Eric put together the staff report for the solar energy systems. Both of these discussions tonight, um, are really kind of, well, Eric's is a little bit more pointed, and we'll get to that, but, I really took some time and reviewed the planning, uh, the Michigan Association of Planning Zoning Reform Toolkit, there's a lot of great information in there, um, as well as some other facts and figures, so, um, as we lead up to discussing some of these amendments, I think some of the amendments will come right out of this text that we're looking at, so if we can, like to take a look at, um, and I don't know if you guys read these ahead of time, but if you did, then we'll just go through, um, and, and get your opinions on them, and I'll make some notes, but I thought, um, the first work session, let's take a look at the contributing factors, let's look at the four L's, labor, lumber, land, and laws. Um, I found that it was interesting that the current labor shortage goes back to the Great Recession, and that a report by the Home Builders Association of two thousand seventeen, uh, reported that between twenty and twenty, two, I'm, I'm sorry, two thousand, two thousand twenty-nine, we lost forty-three percent of the workforce in residential construction. I used to know a lot of friends that were in residential construction, and now, I may know one, maybe Shane Dagerdon still does it, I don't, not many. So, many of these workers haven't been replaced, so that's something that adds to the cost, right? And it, in another, in another sense, it also has led to prefabrication, uh, and being trucked into place as evidence, but, um, excuse me, um, the Phil's five fifty tiny homes, so those are prefab, they come on, on a truck, takes about five hours to put them together, away you go. So, the labor issue, in my opinion, kinda led also to uh, some streamlining or off-site manufacturing, uh, of homes, and I thought that was interesting, when you're talking about housing types, and what we might consider to be permitted in the community, uh, as we amend our ordinance.
Are these figures nationwide, or just, uh, in the area?
Um, this figure, uh, lost forty-three percent, that's tied to Michigan, for sure. Now, there's also been a continuous outmigration from Michigan, um, unfortunately, and so that may have something to do with it as well, so I tried to, I put these in here, but I also wanted to have more of a conversation about each one, because I think there's other things that play into them. Uh, lumber, obviously, we saw prices at Menards going through the ceiling during the pandemic, those have actually since come down, uh, a great amount, in fact, I saw something in the amount, about thirty-five percent lower than they were, during the pandemic, and they're, they're actually right on par with where they were pre-pandemic, so that, that one I wanted to kind of, I guess, exemplify and just say that, uh, I didn't think that one really factored in at this time, because those prices have come back down. But transportation costs, gas, um, warehousing, I, I think those rents are still elevated, and that may factor into it somewhat as well.
Land also, the land hasn't gone down.
Yeah, we're gonna talk about land, so this kinda plays in, and I, I definitely, when we, when I wrote this in here about land, I thought about the Longyear project, for sure. So, land, the availability of land for development can heavily impact housing prices. Commonplace scenarios include unwilling landowner who stalls the aggregation of property, that would make a more cost-effective development site, um, I haven't run into that too much here, unless somebody can give me an example. Uh, perhaps we could discuss the, um, the forty acre piece up the hill on Venture Drive, that property has been for sale for a long time, uh, but at a very elevated price, like in the four to five million dollar range, uh, for that corrected forty that is owned by Jim Ross and Tanya, Scott, who, you know, we had that arrangement with, uh, for the park property. A desirable property located near a regional center, which that one is, with community amenities priced at an unreasonable premium. I don't think that's necessarily the case for us, or a site that is encumbered with easements or deed restrictions, so that's, that's more along the lines of a subdivision like here on Woods, or Bishop Woods, um, we don't really run into too many of those unless you have a utility corridor or something along those lines. So, this gets into more of what I think we probably deal with most. Suitable soils can also be an important contributing factor to land availability, where large portions of a region are impacted by wetlands, river, estuaries, or high water table, opportunities for new housing can be limited. So we do have some of that to include topography, um, slope, um, things like that. And one thing I wanted to add to that, that I should have, is just the availability of suitable well water. The Blue Hair and Bluffs Two project ran into that on the western portion, or on the north side of the basin. Uh, on those last few parcels, they were unable to get the flow of water that they needed to develop those sites, so they factor into a, I don't know if they're kind of a common area, or still trying to be sold, or maybe they'll end up sharing a well with somebody else, I don't know how that would work out, but, um, so that does play into, and also, in the same area, um, it's, it's good that Longyear's not proposing well-inseptic scenario, because, you know, that's very much in the same area that the shortage of water was located, so, on the other hand, they're proposing to run water in sewer, um, and that mitigates that issue. Can I help you? Were you guys talking about the, um, the P U D plan on Forestville today?
Nope.
Perfect.
Nope.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're lucky in that we have a lot of property in the township, we have fifty-four square miles, uh, we're about eight percent developed in all of it, if most of it is, uh, right here in the commercial corridor, and maybe a mile or two, well, a mile north or south of that.
How much developed, eight percent?
Roughly, yep. So we definitely have a lot of open space and, and, and availability to grow, obviously, services are needed for that, so you think about roads and water and sewer. That, those are challenges, um, with regard to land, anyway, unless you guys can think of any more.
And when you, when you put those services in, that also contributes to the unaffordability of housing, because you, I know in up in Oak Hills, we got a price of what would cost each homeowner is fifty thousand dollars. So, you put that in, so each lot, you're gonna have to charge fifty thousand dollars more for, if you're putting that in theoretically.
Right, and who would have thought that the water would have ran out up in that area, you know, those homes have been, I know the Anthos, I remember being a kid and going to the Anthos house in Oak Hill, and, um, that was thirty-five years ago, so, things do, you know, you hope that that water table recharges, but in that case, you guys have had some sketchy water up there, and, um, I know that Lenny's been working with some of the homeowners to try to mitigate that situation.
Well, two of them built new wells, so they were the ones that wanted, wanted it up there, so. I think they probably figured it wasn't gonna go, so.
Um, in the same sense, and that, it's why it's important to hold to standards, I would say, um, the Northwoods Estates, back at the time when the Subaru dealership was going in, on an aside conversation, asked me to investigate how much it would be to widen the road, so that the county would pick it up and plow it and maintain it, but all of those folks now have to either special assess themselves, if they wanted to make the road wider, or make any road improvements, um, and I believe they're all on wells as two, so, not that there's any problems with our well water, I don't believe, I don't have any problems with it. But when people develop a subdivision, um, you know, we should try to encourage the extension of water and sewer, if it's available, and, you know, if, if they have to pay for it and then assess those lots, uh, which is typically what happens, um, you pass that cost on to the developer, or the, I'm sorry, the, the would-be homeowner.
Are there any ways to get any kind of grants, or, uh, some kind of funding from the state for, to help out on that?
Yes, yeah. We have to figure out where we would like to go, I know four ninety-two is obviously a, a low-hanging fruit, um, and when the hospital was knocking at the door, remember, we rezoned a lot of properties south of four ninety-two, anticipating, you know, medical types moving into the area. Um, so far, that really hasn't come to fruition, uh, there's been some people moving in and people moving out, but as far as new homes, um, I should get you some numbers, I know Janelle compiled, uh, our permits from last year, so I'll include that in the next packet, uh, so you guys can see, I think we had about a dozen new homes in the community, which is up.
So percentage-wise, based on other areas, that our size and our, that's probably a good number.
I would think so, yes.
And I would think a lot of people, if you could cut that bill in half, twenty-five thousand's a lot more payable than fifty thousand.
Well, it wouldn't be that much if you have a,
Central.
You know, a, a revolving loan fund grant, or something along those lines, yeah.
What happened on Vanderboeum, did you get any fund for that, any kind of a grant for that, on Vanderboeum?
The extension to the south?
No, along, um, off of Grove Street there.
Oh, um, I believe there was, yeah, I can definitely find out, but I believe that was aided by.
Seems like I remember thirty thousand was the cost of a lot back then.
Well, it's all based on feet, how many feet you are on, and if you're on a corner, you're in trouble.
Yeah.
So.
For an assessment, yeah.
Right, so the sewer, over where I live, we were the excluded area, we did get some grant on it. We did get some grant on it to the sewer, but we're all paying still.
Great. And then there's hookup costs too.
Yeah, there's lots of little grols.
Which is about seven thousand, I believe.
Yeah.
So, yeah, not cheap and obviously that's a great point with regard to affordability. How can we bring that down if we wanna grow and what, what options do we have, so?
But to put in a septic and to drill a well, urge free either. So we really have to look at that whole.
Well, it depends how deep you have to go for that, you know, that's still variable.
So when we get to the point where we start talking about lot sizes, we can certainly allow smaller lot sizes provided that water and sewer are extended to those areas, similar to what is being proposed up in Forestville.
That'd be the only way you could do it is.
That's the theory, right, yeah. Otherwise, you're looking at forty thousand square feet, which is just shy of an acre.
And in Trowbridge, currently there are different lot sizes depending on Ontario.
Yep.
Is that still correct?
Oh, yeah.
So just so you know that on one side of Ontario, the lot sizes are sixty feet. And on the other side of Ontario, which would be the west side, they are fifty.
Well, some of them are, yeah. And some of those properties have the ability to, to still be split again and some of them don't. It depends where in Trowbridge. Trowbridge is a little bit unique.
Yep, so when you're talking about land, I was thinking about this, reading all of this. We have some what I used to call paper roads. What's the possibility of having those become real roads, which then opens up frontage? I mean, you wanna talk about lots in a small, Trowbridge is really a small subdivision with a lot of different housing types in it already.
Yep.
And, and how do we get those roads to become real roads? I mean, there's one right by me.
Yeah, we have lots of undeveloped anyways.
Cause that would open.
Cost, um, there's some drainage in the area, you know.
Who bears the cost of developing the road?
Well, the developer would.
No, but it's not a developer, those are county roads.
Right, but it, but if somebody improves that right away, the cost is typically borne by the homeowner or the developer.
Well, that's interesting to me because those, those roads have road signs on them. Says the name of the road, it's just not a road.
Right, but we've run into several instances where we've had application, not applications, but conversations with people. Obviously, they, you know, the real estate people are marketing the property. But as soon as we tell them, you're required to bring that up to a county spec. It usually shies people away because of the astronomical cost involved. So is there a way for them to work with the county to special assess each lot? Perhaps there is, but so far, nobody's taken that challenge.
But that would be.
That's one way to do it.
That, that would be the idea for opening up some home house, home lots in Trowbridge.
Yeah, no, I, if you look through the master plan, there's a whole, uh, there's a map in here that shows our undeveloped right of ways. And there, it's significant.
It's not all drainage issues, there are some drainage issues.
Well, rock, topography.
What if you change the thinking of how you do things here as, as far as these roads go? You know, you say, well, the developer has to pay to do the road and all that. Well, it's not the developer that really pays, it's the homeowner that pays. So that's part of the unaffordability problem is if, if the county or township or whoever, state could build those homes, those roads themselves, that cuts a lot of cost out of the land that you have to put into it if you buy the lot.
Yeah, I don't, I don't wanna speak sideways out of my mouth, but Trowbridge is a unique, uh, piece of property. And one, because it's planted. So if, if you have an area that, uh, the lots and blocks are there, but it's just not subdivided, then you have to, I have to, would have to ask Dulcey, you know, can that be subdivided? I know that there's areas in Trowbridge that can't be subdivided anymore and what constitutes that. But yeah, if we have to do a replat, maybe it'd be worth it, but I like, I like what you're thinking. And that goes back to, you know, does the township have a fund for capital improvements that would lead to, you know, and that's long-term budgeting. It's the same thing for buying a new fire truck or, you know, buying property for a park that I firmly believe, I know we always, I don't know what the board does all the time, but, um, you know, that kind of foreshadowing of, of being, not relying on somebody to, to, to give you five hundred thousand dollars in in-kind land value to go get a grant to acquire a piece of property for a park. It would be nice to have some kind of seed money to have some skin in the game to make things happen.
Well, that's why this Sherwood Park, five acre piece, it'll be a, a nice achievement.
Yeah, so I'll, uh, I think the board's gonna have that on their agenda for next week's meeting.
And, and.
We just received a letter of interest today.
Oh, great.
And it's a beautiful packet, they do a really nice job.
Is this from the same company yet, still that?
Yeah. I was doing the meeting minutes and I was thinking of, you know, I kinda made that comment about them. So I emailed her and I was like, do you guys have your letter of interest ready yet? Five minutes later, she just went, and there it is.
And, and when the, when the letter of interest, does it come with some kind of concept plan?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, site plan.
So come to the, maybe the minutes, the minutes are going to all of you right from the minute. So you'll get the information that the board.
And, and just to follow up on something that we've discussed in the, the fifteen million dollar fund from, uh, Invest U P. I, since our last meeting, I talked to my contact and he said that they were almost ready to have it, have their plan done. I don't know whether it's done or not, I'll be meeting with this guy in a couple weeks.
Well, we've got four hundred and sixty acres that I'm gonna be asking them for money for because the We Energies property, we, we met on it again today. The seller is like chomping at the bit to sell his property. They don't wanna have the carrying costs. They wanted a purchase agreement in place by January thirty-first.
They thought they were gonna flip it and make a lot.
And, and in fact, the way that they presented it to us, this Mr. Tolxdorf, who I, I've met a lot of people in my career, um, none is quite as pushy as, as this character.
From Wisconsin Energy?
He's the representative of the guy that bought the property from Wisconsin. We know that they paid less than a million dollars for that property.
Well, but they reported they paid two point something. That's, that's, that was, that was false?
Here's, here's another one. We've got it on record, it's, 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 it's open information.
But you saw the, you saw the Mining Journal article where, where there was.
The original, no, he said the original, he, this is what I had sent to the board. I followed up with the board afterward.
He did, he sent something to.
The article in the Mining Journal indicated that while the original sale price was gonna be two point three, but we're gonna offer it to the township for one point five.
Oh, I see.
I was in a meeting today where he said the township can outright buy the property for one point five million. Or if you get a grant, the cost is two point two million and we're gonna elevate the value of the property.
Well, that doesn't work.
Why do we, why, let me ask you this, why does the township want the property? Is because it would be the link.
You've got the North Country Trail, which is a national trail, and MTN's main ski trail coming through the south portion of the property. He told us again today that the guy's not interested in busting up the property at all.
Okay.
Like somebody told us.
Exactly, so this guy, okay.
He's just talking.
Another thing he threatened us with today is that he, he said, well, I guess I'm just gonna sell it to, you know, uh, people that wanna blast rock and, and have gravel. So, so he's framing it as highly acclaimed recreational property on one side of his mouth and then saying that if we don't buy it, he's just gonna convey it to the Lindbergs and everybody else. So I kinda jabbed back today and I said, well, we'll have to take a look at the zoning on that property and see what's the highest and best use moving forward. I don't think he liked that very much.
What, what is it zone, how is it zoned now?
Resource production, which is extraction, logging, gravel. But forest recreation has a nice connotation to it, doesn't it? Much like the property down south, which is also hardwood forest property. We did the city's job essentially by rezoning that property to a district that only allows recreational land uses.
Is the, so it's.
We've yet to do a planning exercise because we just found out about this, that it's even available. In talking to John, I would prefer to own the property. I think we could get matching funds from NTN and the North Country Trail. The problem is, is that they don't wanna wait. We explained to them, look, if we apply for a grant to acquire it at your price, here's our match, we don't know, we're gonna come up with that. And we have to wait till next December. And he's like, ah, that's not gonna work. I said, well, there's no reason for us to put it on the agenda next week then. We left the meeting by basically saying that Carl Linquist was gonna look at some other, maybe national grant opportunities that would have a quicker turnaround, but it doesn't look good. And the only other way I can think about it is if the township was to go out and finance it through conventional financing, retain the property that would be advantageous for recreational opportunities and then maybe develop some housing. My, this goes back to your comment about Invest U P because I would love to ask Invest U P for one point five million of their fifteen million to buy a piece of property and demonstrate affordable housing.
But I'm not sure that you could get that money for purchase. I think you could get it for infrastructure, but I don't, maybe you know more about it than I do because you, I'm sure you know more about it than I do. But I, I was told that it's for infrastructure, like water and sewer, stuff like that. I'm not sure it's for purchase price.
Okay.
But I don't know.
Yeah.
You, you're.
I'll find out.
You'll find out.
We, we called Marty Fatante today.
Okay.
Left a message because twenty acres of the four sixty, apparently right adjacent to County Road five fifty, is being reserved for the new Jacob Eddy Veterans Facility. And I said, well, I said, is that right? I said, we, we don't know anything about that. Uh, there's no water, there's no sewer, there's no, there's power, uh, but there's no other services in the area. Furthermore, we're not zoned for it. He goes, well, you'll work with the veterans, won't you? I said, well, yeah, I'm a veteran myself, but I want you to be realistic and do your due diligence because, uh, we're not ready for that. Our fire department's not ready for it.
So he's carving out of the offer.
Four sixty goes to four forty with twenty acres on the north side of the Fly Ash Road adjacent to and abutting County Road five fifty.
For the Jacob Eddy?
That's what he told me. So of course, we go to Fatante, we called Fatante today to ask him if that was true. And if it's not true, I don't plan on talking to that gentleman anymore.
Yeah.
So with the, with the price of the twenty acres?
I did too, the airport.
No, I heard it was going along the lake.
That'd be perfect.
That's what I heard.
You mean with close towers?
Makes sense, as long as they cap it with enough topsoil, it should be fine.
So who knows what's going.
Well, that's, that's, that's what it is and, and Steve knows. If you have a brownfield site, um, you clean it up, you remediate the soils and you put the soil back in, clean soil, and then your level of development justifies how much topsoil you put on.
Well, is.
Look at the, look at the, you know, you know why those houses down on the, the condos down on the lake? When they went to site plan review, those elevations and the height of those buildings probably was what they said they were. But nobody looked at the, the finished floor area or the elevation of which they would start.
Isn't the, isn't that, I mean, just the term Fly Ash Road indicates to me that must be a brownfield.
No, it's, it's, it's not. Nothing in that four sixty is, uh, I, I don't believe because of Fly Ash. It's beyond that though.
Anything can be brownfield.
Well.
You don't have to have chemical.
They expanded what constitutes a brownfield.
Is any of that property that this guy, or whatever his name is, is offering, is it, is it contaminated, would it be considered brownfield?
I don't believe so.
Okay, well, where did they, why did they call it the Fly Ash Road?
It's the road they drove.
It's the road that led to the Fly Ash site.
Okay, but the Fly Ash site's not included in this property?
Correct.
Okay.
And will still be owned, maintained and regulated.
By We Energy?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, probably forever.
And there's no issues of leaching or anything into this piece of property?
Good question.
No one knows that for sure. That would be my guess.
I know that the county and we had a long discussion about indemnification because obviously stuff comes off trucks, blows in the wind, you know, for how many years? Seventy years? So, um, I know the county wanted to be held, you know, absolutely not liable for anything within their right of way that they covered. So that might be a, yeah, it might be a question for the county to see if they were able to, and, you know, I don't know if anybody's done soil borings. A lot of it's rock and a lot of it's undevelopable. Is it attractive to a gravel operation? Yes, but do you want blasting happening next to the North Country Trail or to Blue Heron Bluffs?
Well, do you.
You know, we kinda saw that area as being a, another residential area.
But what are the veterans gonna think when they got Smith right there blasting?
Right.
So, I mean, that doesn't make sense.
So a lot of this is speculation. Hopefully, in the next couple of weeks, when we come back with two site plans at our next meeting, we'll have some more firm answers for you.
Two site plans, meaning what? From who?
One is a restaurant and retail next to Freco to complement the bakery.
The bakery.
Which is going in. They've had trouble finding rooftop HVAC systems was another reason they didn't build this here. The availability and supply chain issues are, you know, are still out there. And then the other one is going to be a new financial institution in the area of the market transmission site down at the bottom of the hill on the north side. Beautiful, infill development, it'll look nice.
What they doing at Zambons?
Um, so Sisu Cycles bought that. It's just a real small, uh, I think it's a one or two-person outfit. His wife's a dentist and, um, so, yeah.
Well, I'm thinking about it too. Probably not the right time to bring it up, but that Nirvana place. Did you see the lighting there?
No.
There, it's attached to the wall and it's real, this real bright light that's like glowing everywhere. And I know it's not residential, but it sure is in Doncaster lighting.
Oh, is that right?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, okay, fun.
Yeah.
I love having people put shielding on their lights. Um, I will make them well aware of that and they will act quickly. I guarantee you they will because they don't wanna lose that opportunity. So I'll, yeah, I didn't, in fact, I'll, I'll go down there on my way home to check it out.
Yeah.
If they're still open. So let's continue on here. Where large portions of a region are impacted by wetland, river, estuaries or high water table, we could add topography to that, well water opportunities. The bottom page one here and the staff report, opportunities for new housing can be limited. In high demand areas, if much of the land is not buildable or if the available land is overregulated, so that in my opinion ties back to zoning, this will result in higher prices for the limited land that is buildable. So again, this kinda strikes a chord with the longer development because they're utilizing the billable land and reserving other land for common areas. And this again will tie into, and I'm not, I'm not cheerleading for them. I'm just, I, I think their scale of development is probably a, a very modern scale of development and, and it's further supported by some of these other factors that we'll go over. And it goes into laws, right? So laws are the things that we can directly impact and improve upon. Essentially, um, you know, we, we prescribe where single-family duplexes, townhomes, apartments, et cetera, go and where they're legal to construct. And this also impacts then how much land and houses are likely to cost. Local zoning provisions, which set minimum standards for home or unit size, that's also derived a little bit by some of the county standards. And that's something that we'll have to look at when we, if we do massage the minimum finished floor area size, then we'll have to talk. uh, finished floor area size, then we'll have to talk with the, both the county building codes department and uh, the health department. But anyway, um, lot size, lot width, or lot frontage will play an important role in determining how many units and lots can be created and what a new homeowner or rentier will have to pay. These are typical dimensional requirements. Most ordinances also dictate housing type that can be constructed in each zoning district here by predetermining a community's housing inventory and selecting the types of housing units a prospective resident can choose from. So this was kinda leading into what I've been mentioning for maybe a couple of months now is that for like the last 50 years, um, you know, single family residential detached has been common across the United States. And in recent years, um, cities like Los Angeles have loosened up their regulations to allow, one, accessory dwelling units, but also to allow single family attached. So whether it's a duplex or a townhouse, you could have multiple housing types in a single fam, uh, what was traditionally a single family residential dwelling unit? Or, I'm sorry, single family zoning district. So one of the things I wanted to talk about with the planning commission when we started looking at zoning text amendments, which will come, maybe not the next meeting because it'll be pretty busy, but that first week, uh, the first meeting in February would be, should we be considering the allowance of townhomes, multifamily, and duplexes anywhere? Maybe not anywhere, but you know, if, if somebody wants to have a subdivision with only, you know, single family detached homes, they can put together uh, you know, their, their covenants and deed restrictions and do all that. But if it's not somewhat, you know, if it's not required, why wouldn't we have that flexibility to have various housing types other than just single family detached?
Yeah, well, wasn't, I mean, just to shortcut this discussion a little bit. I mean, I don't remember how long ago it was. I guess it was maybe a couple of months ago. This, you provided us with this uh, excerpts from Michigan Planner Housing. The local decisions that make a difference. And then there was a, there was a, there was a uh, a complimentary handout that was in our package.
Yeah, it's straight out of that.
And, and we deferred uh, discussion on that at that time. But from, and then from what you said when you, your preface to this whole discussion was about the Michigan Planner Toolkit. And so, I mean, there's a lot of things in here that, you know, it looks like this is your outline for a suggestion to us amendments. You know, whatever.
It is, yes. Yeah, very much so.
Okay.
And this is happening across the country. So a lot of planners are working on housing right now and how to
Yeah.
uh, do this. And one of the easiest ways for local municipalities is through zoning. So you know, breaking up areas that are, you know, single family only. There's a couple of instances in our ordinance where you can only have multifamily on the corner of such and such or north of such and such a road. That's a, that's essentially spot zoning. Um, so we need to, we need to get rid of that for sure. That's one thing we need, we need to do. The other part of this is convincing the residents that this is beneficial for the community because if you live in a single family residential area and then all of a sudden now somebody wants to put up a duplex, there is gonna be some pushback. There's gonna be additional water needed, uh, utilities needed, additional parking needed. But if the lot size is right, and I think we'll talk about that too, or if um, you know, I think of corner lots, obviously they're a little bit larger typically. You know, why wouldn't you allow that flexibility? Whether it's by special use permit or permitted or what have you.
What, there was another thing in one of these handouts about an existing dwelling that within the dwelling is subdivided, provided an additional.
Yes, ADUs, accessory dwelling units. We'll definitely talk about those.
Yeah. But accessory dwelling units can be either within the same dwelling or they can be considered a smaller house like a grandpa's house or whatever they do.
Yeah.
What are they called?
Mother-in-law's.
Mother-in-law's house.
Mother-in-law suite.
Or a, you know, whatever, yeah, next to another thing too, right? Now, I don't, I'm not sure if that makes anything more affordable, but.
Well, it may, in some cases, what I've read is that the actual homeowner moves into the ADU and rents out the home.
Which.
Which makes the cost of owning that property less.
Right.
We have some of those in market in Trowbridge.
So anyway, I mean, so basically what you're talking about is you're gonna be presenting us with a lot of these ideas for amendments.
Showing you in the ordinance how they would look.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Sounds good.
And then, and then looking at some maps too to kinda
See where they would fit. I, I can tell you, I, I don't want one in my neighborhood.
You don't want what?
I don't want duplexes in my neighborhood.
Okay.
Okay, that's because we're a single family community. We have basically closed roads. People don't come all over and it's families. So I certainly, you know, my neighbors would be irate, I can tell you. They were irate one time when they wanted to move housing onto small lots and they, they filled the room.
Here's our case study right here.
So, yeah, they filled the roof. Now, I can tell you on um, that accessory dwelling thing, done well, people would be okay with because that's family, even if it doesn't turn out to be family. They perceive it as family. So do you, so you have to think, do you want an apartment next to your house today?
Renters.
Well, it wouldn't necessarily be an apartment. It would be, uh, it could be the homeowner living on one side.
People living, right. And we have duplexes in Trowbridge. Is that spot zoning? It's right there, right by the bar. There's a bunch of them. One, two, three, four, five, six of them maybe.
Rentals or duplexes?
They're duplexes.
Oh.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, we do allow duplexes in some areas. I'm not, I'm just saying like, it may, it may be a special use. The overreaching comment here is that for 50 years or more, or since the turn of the 20th century, we've been doing land uses by type and then separating them. And what, what planners of the world are saying right now is that um, you know, we should massage zoning districts and maybe even blend. You know, instead of having rural residential and um, and urban residential, maybe it's just residential. And, and then allowing things where they would fit. You know, certainly multifamily is allowed in the development district. That's a buffer between the commercial and the urban residential or rural residential. That's how we have it set up now. So, yeah, these will be tough discussions to have. Especially when it comes time to when the public hearing happens, the media gets a hold of it, understands we're making some changes, and then we're gonna have to explain all this to them. So I don't want you to think any of this stuff is gonna be easy to get through. That's not gonna be the case, except for maybe the ADUs. I think the ADUs make sense. The city is already doing that.
Well, the, the uh, the change in the uh, the tiny home, that will be probably easy. Reducing the required square footage.
Yep.
That, I don't see that.
Or getting rid of it.
Or getting rid of it. Okay.
Do you remember um, how this room was packed when we had that mother-in-law suite up in Bishop Woods by?
Oh, for Dennis Anderson.
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, that's, I guess I've, I've talked to him since then and it's really
Crazy about that.
Really calmed down, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I think a lot of people were, there, there is a situation where you had a subdivision. They had initially, they had covenants and homeowners association. A lot of those houses have changed ownership several times. So now the owners association falls, falls out. And they have nothing to go on for covenants because they've got no association to it. So then they're asking the township to enforce their covenants, which we couldn't do because we don't do that. Yeah, yeah. So if we can, we can win those people over, maybe we could win over, you know, you're not gonna win over the here on Woods people or the Bishop Woods people on this stuff. This is more for um, Trowbridge Park, perhaps in some of the undeveloped areas that we are seeing where development would go. Certainly in the urban residential, or rural residential area down on 492, it makes sense.
You know, historically, uh, back into the probably 40s and 50s when they were building houses then in Marquette, it seems like you could have, it was just residential then. You could have duplexes, you could have four units, you could have single family all mixed in together.
That's what, that's what we're trying to say.
We're kinda going back to, you know, the 40s and 50s, which they got away from
Yeah.
in the 60s, 70s, 80s, 90s.
Well, that, there's, and there's reasons for that. There was the Federal Highway Act. There was uh, right after World War II, they're pumping out cars, like there's no tomorrow. That allowed people to get out of the city and actually um, you know, expand out and, you know, homeownership was uh, was something that was off.
Was the American.
It was the American dream, right? So um, yeah, there's a reason why this happened. I mean, anytime you're flying around in a plane and you're landing in a city, all you have to do is look down and see how the tiki-tacky houses are, you know, the curvy roads and all that stuff is just suburbia. Whereas um, initially, you know, the, the streets and blocks, this is what Trowbridge is obviously, was the more desired uh, and probably happier community because uh, in a lot of cases, there were sidewalks, uh, porches uh, that people would sit out on and you'd walk by and talk.
Alley's.
Alley's where the horses would go in the garage and all that business happened back there in the alley. So, yeah, people's front yards and I think about, I wish, sometimes I wish I grew up in an era like that where things were a lot different than they are now. Now, you mean, somebody puts in a subdivision, you're lucky if you can get them to put in a sidewalk. And then you talk to somebody that lives in a subdivision, they don't even know their neighbors. You know, they've never even met them. They've been there for 10 years.
And they don't want to.
That's, that's kinda the way society is going. I think we can do some, you know, we start off small and just do some real introductory type of things that is palatable to the community. At least we tried, right? And, and we did things that are uh, modern and popular in the planning world and everybody's working on this situation. So hopefully we can all do our part, but um.
Well, I don't know, I can't remember if it was, if you put it in here or if it was in that article I was telling you about in Dennis Stackwitz's um, article.
Yeah, I did put it in the pack.
The um, average square footage of a house from 1960 was 1500 and the average uh, yeah, is in that one.
Yeah.
You know, it's like 2,400. So right there, that makes it unaffordable compared to the affordable houses back then.
Absolutely, yeah. And that's interestingly, Longyear's proposals for 15, 2,400 square feet, which is harkening back to an earlier time. You know, I, I would imagine some of the houses, and there may be even, it may be even in their covenant that in here on Woods, a house has to be a specific size. And I'm not saying it has to be this small. It's gotta be this big. And that adds to, you know, the overall value of the community and, you know, keeps values consistent across each parcel in the property. So uh, let's go through these because they're pretty interesting and that's why I included them. Um, so other factors, most people are living alone. Uh, people living alone are now the most common type of household nationally and in Michigan. People living alone account for approximately 30% of all households. Single family, single person households accounted for only 13% in 1960. I think a lot of that has to do with uh, social economic factors such as uh, divorce and affordability. I think affordability pays into that too.
And you know what else plays in that they don't always talk about? Yes, women went to work. They made enough money.
Sure.
They did not.
Uh, women, women's independence.
They now talk about that, but then they did not marry.
So the reason that I put, you know, try to put this together is so that when we do have these zoning text amendments and we have a public hearing, we can, we can relate back to this stuff and kinda explain, you know, why this is, why we're proposing this. It wasn't just something from the hip. It was, you know, well documented. The people living alone, that kinda leads me to think that maybe multifamily would be more, more important in that case rather than the single family, but you never know, depending upon incomes. So uh, next one is households are getting older. Uh, in 1960, 18% of the US households, householders were 65 years or older. And in 2020, 27% uh, were over 65. So.
Well, I bet in 20 years, it's gonna go back to 1960 figures because of the low birth rate.
Boomers and millennials are the two largest demographics.
Yep. So it'll be back to.
So that will revert back and we can, maybe that's a moot point on that one. Uh, multi-generational.
Kill ourselves because of the housing market. Everybody over 70.
I thought this one was interesting and I always, you know, I always used to talk with my parents, but multi-generational households are increasing. There's been an increase in the number of adult children living with their parents. And so between 2000, 2017, the share of young ages, of young adults, 30, 25 to 34, living with their parents almost doubled. Now, that may have had something to do with uh, job loss, pandemic type of, no, no, that was before that.
If either, if either weren't jobs for kids to get.
Yeah.
Our market, our job market was horrible.
So jobs.
I think that was it. You know, they graduated from college and they had nowhere to go.
Yeah.
Jobs and plus in the cities, you talk about the prices of housing here, but you go to the cities and forget it. You can't afford to buy a house.
We can't afford to live in an apartment alone.
No, even that too?
Yeah.
You think about like, um, I don't know how, I don't know how many years I wanna go back because I don't, I'm starting to date myself sometimes when I say this stuff, but 20s, 30s, 40s, you had multiple generations living under the same roof, which I thought was interesting. Making things affordable. Obviously, there was probably more industry and agriculture happening, um, which made a lot of sense to have extra hands on, but.
Go to some neighborhoods in Chicago and you still have that.
Do you?
Yeah.
It's the only way they could probably survive these days, yeah.
Yeah.
So, so the farms had that for sure. The farmers did that.
Irish were, were, were noted for that too. They had a lot of
Italians.
Italians, Irish.
They just all lived together.
European.
Here they lived in neighborhoods.
Two stories, you know, which is another reason we should have duplexes.
Well, I'm not opposed to duplexes. There are some wonderful duplexes that look very nice.
Yeah, I think modern builds would be really.
I mean, you know, Trowbridge is an interesting place because it has people's camps still there.
I think if you just grandfathered what you had and then just move on from there.
Yeah.
And, you know, the people that are living where they are like it the way it is. So you can't go in there and say, well, this is
Yeah, you can do this, yeah.
We're gonna let them put duplexes in here now. Just grandfather what you have and move on.
The unfortunate part in Trowbridge is there's not hardly any buildable land that has a road in front of it.
Well, we just got done talking about how to incentivize that and maybe.
Maybe the county will put a road in.
Well, maybe if you told folks that, you know, in this particular area, and there are a number of those areas where there's just dead air or, you know, dead space, that, you know, hey, we would allow multifamily or duplexes in this area. All of a sudden, that makes the affordability of that, you know, that much more feasible.
I do, I do think the road thing would help.
Yeah, yeah, this all ties together. Um, next one now, let's keep going. I don't wanna keep it too late. Households are getting smaller. Okay, so in 1960, it was 3.29. Average household today is 2.51. Um, that also has to do with just people having less children uh, and more people that are having zero children. Uh, walkable neighborhoods. So this is an interesting one. Millennials and baby boomers, two largest generations right now, desire to live in a walkable neighborhood and not necessarily in downtowns. Walkable suburban neighborhoods that become more popular, especially for Gen Z and Gen, and millennials. So I put a note in here saying, you know, we, we really don't have sidewalks. We've done a pretty good job of trying to retrofit uh, Trowbridge with our walking paths. But I would also uh, qual- qualify direct trail access with um, with walkability too. So up here, you know, we're really renowned for our trail systems. And I think that, you know, again, with the Longyear project, they're gonna, they're not gonna provide sidewalks per se. But they are gonna have an integrated trail network that does connect to the NTN and from there you can get anywhere pretty.
Well, with this uh, renovary uh, concept, you know, okay, just to share a couple of thoughts. 48 units. A certain percentage of those units should be uh, no more than 850 square feet. And the bottom floor should be shops, commercial of sorts, whatever. That's a walkable neighborhood. Right?
Yeah, they could have a commercial. I don't think, they didn't propose any commercial component to it.
Well.
It, they're very much adjacent to the commercial district and I hope that they will, you know, if that goes through, they'll obviously tie into the park, which ties into the Iron and Heron Trail.
I mean, we could, we have a.
Well, it's only five acres, so just keep that in mind.
Well, five acres, but we're not, I mean, I'm, I'm thinking five acres is gonna be a multi-story building. I'm not thinking it's gonna, they're gonna put single unit families on that.
Yeah, they were talking about.
Townhomes, yeah.
Five stories.
Well, I, I, my, my concept for that, if I had my, my way, they would have, that would be like a condominium tower.
Or they want to.
Or a, a, a wing condominium tower, take up less space, have, uh, you, you, you got more, uh, land available. You could put, you know, a commercial on the bottom. You'd have a nice little shops and this and that. You'd have, uh, a, a eight hundred and fifty square foot next to an eight hundred square, fifty square foot. You'd have a two thousand square foot over here and this tower, uh, or adjacent tower. That's mixed use. That's what we have to think about. We can't think about, if you're gonna build single families on that five acres, I'm against that. I'm not, I'm not for that idea. I thought they were gonna, I thought this was gonna be an affordable housing thing where they're gonna put in, uh, you know, if they wanna put, if they wanna put two towers or, you know, a condominium tower doesn't take up that much space.
Yeah. Uh, you have plenty of opportunity to, you know, comment on that.
Yeah, yeah, well, that's, that's what I'm thinking for this. I mean, otherwise, it's just gonna be more of the same.
Hmm, no, because there's different funding mechanisms used in getting people into those homes. So, and we'll, we'll talk about that.
All right, all right.
It'll be fun to see. Just think of it that way.
Yeah, I, I'm really excited about it. I think it's a great demonstration and partnership between, you know, the land bank and.
And then you have to think about who's living in our community and what it is that they want. What do people in this community want?
What kind of territory?
Well, what are the ages of the people who are having a hard time finding out?
All ages.
And so, so if, if a seventy-year-old wants a, what do they want versus what does, what does, um, the, my granddaughter want? She's twenty-five. What does she want? Where does she wanna live? Where does she see?
Well, eighty percent, eighty-six percent of people over seventy wanna stay where they are, so.
They do, I agree. I, I.
Nobody wants to move.
They need their grandkids behind them, right? It'll be fun to watch, Jason. It's, it's gotta be better than what we have.
Uh, so, yeah, Jim covered the baby boomers. Obviously, the general synopsis of that is that, um, aging folks would like to remain in their community and in their home if possible. Uh, we don't have housing stock for an aging population, so in here it talks about, uh, step-free entryway. Um, I would say in Marquette area, it's even less than that. Uh, so they're saying only fifty-four percent of homes have a step-free entryway, uh, according to the American Housing Survey. I would say it's less than that in Marquette with, uh, basements and porches and.
Yeah, the snow.
And the snow, yep. Um, homes are getting, have been getting bigger. So, the median, uh, the median size of a single-family home completed in twenty twenty was two, twenty-two sixty-one square feet. Comparatively, the median square footage of a single-family home in nineteen sixty was only fif- fifteen hundred. Um, you can scratch out that number forty, that was a reference. Um, minimum unit sizes required by either zoning or homeowners association give price potential buyers out of a market exacerbating high housing prices. So, I think what you're gonna see, at least if, if people are, you know, twenty-four hundred is pretty, that's a pretty good sized house. Um, but I would think that if it's gonna be affordable, it's gonna be in the two thousand or less category, for sure.
A lot less.
Yeah. Uh, there's a significant mismatch between our housing stock and the household size. So, similar to nationwide numbers, nearly three quarters of Michigan housing units are detached in the single-family homes. So, that, again, it just shows the lack of, of variety in housing types. And then lastly, uh, early twentieth century zoning laws have made detached single-family the only option in many communities. I thought this was fascinating of the nearly one point three million new homes completed in twenty twenty, seventy-one percent are single-family. So, that tells you something. But does it tell you also, and maybe Steve would know, uh, does it tell you that, like, that's where the money's at? I mean, from a developer, developer's standpoint?
Well, I don't, I don't think they'd be making them if they couldn't sell them.
Right.
It's what the market can bear.
Yeah.
Houses in economics, you know, in business, it's what the market can bear. So, if you can, so make, build homes that are three hundred thousand dollar homes and they're selling.
Why build multifamily?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, it, it, it's your price per square foot that you're getting.
Last sentence here, a New York Times analysis of zoning across the country found that it is illegal on seventy-five percent of residentially zoned land to build anything other than a detached, single-family home. We're gonna change that, I hope.
Yeah, you know, I, I was thinking when we were down in Ann Arbor and we were driving around down there, there's so many buildings by, uh, U of M that have, they're four or five, six, seven stories. And right underneath it, they have open parking. So, if the parking is, it's, it's built, it's kind of like, you know, the hurricane houses where it's built on, on those pillars and just to minimize the cost of everything, they don't need all that land because land's probably so expensive in Ann Arbor.
Right, right.
So, you've got it, you know, right underneath there and.
So, their footprint was reduced.
Yeah, that's why, again.
That's covered parking too, which is.
Yeah.
That's why we gotta think of going up.
Yeah.
And small.
So many people don't agree with you.
Well, who cares? We're gonna think forward.
How high, you know, that, just that hotel there.
I used to, I used to want people to like me, but I don't care anymore. I don't give a shit.
The older you get, the less you care for them.
Yeah, but that's what we gotta do, build up and small.
I, I agree.
Small units.
I agree.
All right, let's see if we can get through solar here in fifteen.
Can, can I, can I make?
Basically crucify.
To the solar, look, here. I read this, I read it twice, I read the stuff. Why reinvent the wheel? Here's, and I, I sent this to everybody.
Yep.
But I made, I even made copies. This is the Marquette.
The city ones?
This is the Mar- here, pass it down to Jason.
We don't want ours to be that complicated.
Well, let me just suggest something. Here. Why, why don't we, why don't we, why don't we adopt this as a working document? And then you and Eric can edit it, put in stuff that, you know, that, uh, you believe is appropriate. You can bring in Ben Shempf, uh, cause he criticized this, this ordinance. He said, oh, it's too restrictive.
Mm-hmm.
So, okay, what's restrictive about it? Come on, put a red pen on it.
I didn't see anything restrictive about it.
Yeah, I didn't either. I thought it was good.
They restricted the size of the solar panels that you can put on the side of your house and, you know, but you kinda have to do that.
They said it, you have to do it on.
But, but to get us rolling on this, because look, you know, I, I came in when we were partway through the marijuana ordinance and God, that, that took a hell of a long time, right?
Wow, that was the first for everybody.
I know, it was first for everybody. But here, we got, we got, we got a wheel already. Why reinvent it? Let's, let's adopt this as a, 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 as a, as a working draft subj- uh, can, totally conditioned on the editing skills and expertise of, of the, of the planning staff.
Yeah, if there's consensus there, then what Eric and I will do, get with Ben and we'll bring you a draft document.
Okay.
At the first meeting in February. I think we're gonna be pretty busy. We'll give you an update, if you will, after our site plans on the twenty-fifth. Um, but we, we will definitely have a working document that we can maybe go to public hearing with.
And, and there's no copyright on this. I already talked to, I talked to the young planner. You can adopt this word for word.
Yeah, I understand.
You know, you don't need to worry about that, so.
We'll fit it to our ordinance.
Yeah, yeah, but I'm saying.
Does Harg, does Chocly have an ordinance?
Pardon?
Did you see if Chocly had an ordinance for solar power in township?
Oh, no, I didn't go that far, right?
Well, just because they have more land, kind of like we do, and their houses are farther apart unlike the cities. I didn't know if they have something. I tried to find something.
I'm sure everybody has something on renewable energy.
I couldn't find anything.
Yeah. Oh, we'll, we'll dig that up.
Yeah, I mean, I think they're another good source. Maybe they copied this.
Uh, as planners, we do a lot of copying-pasting.
Well, nothing wrong with that. Why would you have the wheel? That's gonna be our.
So do civil engineers. I mean, that just comes down to efficiency, right?
Do you have solar at your house? No.
Do I want solar?
Do you have solar?
No.
Do, and does anyone have solar?
I'd like to know what, uh, uh, I'm gonna talk to my neighbors and see how much they had to pay for that, cause.
I'm sure it was thirty grand.
Yeah, yeah.
But there's an incentive too right now, yeah.
You get what?
Seventy-five hun- well, it's a percentage of what you pay.
Tax credit, you get a tax credit.
I think it takes, you know, from when I read in, in their stuff before, it takes twenty to thirty years for payback on it.
Uh-huh.
It might be a selling point.
I think that's less now, Jim.
Is that?
Yeah, because they're continuously kicking back, um, to, oh, I, I see your return on investment.
Right.
Yeah, well, you, that, you, yeah, I don't think your payoff is forever, but you do get, um, it, it like reduces your, your monthly cost, which only compounds the payback.
I looked at the city about paying, when the city built their solar thing, but, um, after twenty years of paying, you have to start paying all over again, kind of. It was a crazy kind of contract in my mind.
Yeah.
Um, so it did not.
What, you mean the shares in the solar field, solar farm up there for the Waterlight Power?
Yeah.
Yeah, we bought fifteen thousand bucks worth of HP.
Did you?
And we get a, a credit every month.
Right.
Based on.
And that ends for twenty years, right?
I, I forget what it is.
It was for only so many years and then it's something else happens.
Yeah, I forget. Probably long gone.
You get a credit on your electric bill?
Yes, every month.
Okay.
Every month, and depends on how much is generated by the solar, you know, it varies, you know.
Does it not much off?
It's not a big percentage, five percent, three percent, but, you know, so. And it was, it was, I'm sure, I'm sure there was some sort of tax write-off because, you know, we have pretty sharp accounts and finance people up there, but, you know, it was a decision that, you know, they made higher up to like, we're gonna do it, you know, just to.
Where did you do it, Steve? Where?
At Waterlight Power Solar Farm.
And who bought it? You?
We did. We, we bought, you know, fifteen thousand bucks worth of panels or whatever it is, you know, a share.
It'll probably take you twenty dollars or twenty years to get those credits back.
Probably. I think there was a certain fifteen-year payback time or twenty-year payback time.
It's like going to the casino, basically.
That's right, yeah. But, you know, it was something, it was a city thing.
I drove by there the other day and they were all covered with snow.
Yeah, they still, yeah. So, what happens when they're covered but still is my question.
Oh, I don't think they absorb much light, yeah.
So, did this kind of give you guys a little bit of background on how things are and how they got to be? Um, and then some, at least get your wheels turning on some adjustments that we can make that, that may be beneficial to the community. Um, that was the intent of, of tonight's session before diving into firm language on like, okay, we're gonna.
Well, you know, when you think about it, who's responsible for unaffordable housing? We are.
Yeah.
We pay the price for these houses. I mean, people put the price up. How many people are, are offering twenty, thirty, forty thousand dollars more than what they're asking? That's what's making these houses affordable is the people that are buying them and making these prices higher.
So, the next most attractive area in our community may be the rural areas where you're either off-grid or very limited to what you have access to. You know, Carol and I, Saturday mornings, Sunday mornings, we'll get up and look at Zillow because we would love to have, uh, you know, a hobby farm out in Chatham or Scandia or something. That's, you know, just, I live in the woods. I love living in the woods, but there's tall trees. I would love to watch a storm come from twenty miles away and have that open space. Um, and so, you know, we look at camps, we look at things on the water, um, cause we've got dogs. But I, I think people are gonna want, um, maybe they want the land size, but they don't need all these amenities. They're happy to go out to their place and get away and, and maybe only have, uh, elec- electric and they are on well-inseptic. Or maybe they're off-grid completely, um, especially with these, uh, I imagine they'd have to have power if you're gonna have, you know, you can put up Elon's satellite, uh, dish and get that. But, you know, there's people that are working out of their, living out of their vans and working out of their vans and they're just transient. I don't think that's the answer. I think there's some pushback on that and that'll, I mean, it may als- it may always be attractive to do, but I've, I've seen some stories too about people that are coming back saying, well, it's just like being homeless, basically, and that's no cool cause you have nowhere to put your feet down, you know?
Oh, in the van.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that's not, obviously, our, our purview, but, um, I, I just think that that might be another, you know, option that, you know, I don't, I don't want you to tell me how big I have to do in my house. I don't wanna be a part of a homeowners association. I don't want any of that. I just want a little piece of property, my little cabin, and that's where I'm gonna go.
Yeah, yeah, that's good.
But we have.
So, how do we accommodate that, you know?
Don't we have that already happening in the township?
We do, and the issue is with, uh, access for emergency vehicles.
Correct.
And, you know, somebody could sell a house out there and not get homeowners insurance because there's no way in March or April, we're gonna get a seven-thousand-ton vehicle, um.
We never get the snowplows out there sometimes. Great, we'll not be on its own.
So, it's important, you know, there has to be some kind of, uh, give and take. Uh, and the give and take is really gonna be how, how do we access those sites? And then find them, um, in an emergency, because the other thing that we deal with is that we don't have fire numbers on, in our rural area. And so, we have to, we have to work through that too. So, yeah, there was a portion of time when, um, I, I guess a lot of the communities around here did the fire numbers with the nine-one-one and they had a flight done and a grid set up and that's how you did your fire numbers. Well, the township, I guess, opted out of that a number of years ago. And it's come back and biting us in the butt because we do have people living up in Forestville full-time. Um, um, you know, basically improved two-track and, you know, they, they can't even get mail out there. So, it's, it's something that we have to work on as well, and I appreciate any of your thoughts on it.
So, I did hear, just, I heard that, um, who's trying to develop the houses out in Forestville area?
Longyear?
I heard Longyear blocked off some of the roads that have been open all along. So, I don't know, I mean, so if they block those off, so people can't use those trails, that's another thing that.
Well, hopefully the trail use, the trail use could continue, but, yeah, you have to understand that that's privately owned.
Right, that's what I said.
Uh, there's been a lot of, um, laissez-faire use of that property, probably more so than what just trapping and fishing and hunting.
Yeah.
Uh, certainly because of the trails developed on, so, um, yeah, you have to rely on getting those deals done ahead of time.
That getting into some of those sites is, people aren't actually gonna get in, maybe how they used to get in.
Mm-hmm. Well, I'm glad that we're working on that segment of roadway then, at least we'll have.
Yeah.
There is county roads out there though, that, that, that are right of way and that they, Longyear can't touch.
Well, it is their property and I knew people for years, since I grew up here my whole life, you know, they said they blocked off the road to the sand pits, so I don't know if you know where the sand pit is or, you know, there's lots of snowmobilers and bikers.
Mm-hmm.
But, yeah, that's what I heard. Could be not true though. I'd like the DJ Jacob, I think.
Oh, yeah, ju- just, uh, e- east of the dam there, yeah.
We always, people always hung out at the sand pit.
Did nefarious things?
I have no idea, Jim, what they do.
So, we need to.
We know what they did in Forestville.
Can we move along on the agenda?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, so, our six B solar energy systems, group session discussion.
Well, we went through that.
I think we just had that.
You don't wanna talk anymore about it?
No, I think that it.
You just brought that up and.
I brought.
We didn't really move to that agenda item yet.
Oh, we were head, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Well, if you're done talking about it, that's fine.
Whatever I said.
Okay, all right. So, any unfinished business?
No.
Okay, correspondence. Why aren't we building middle-income housing?
Yeah, that was an article that Chairperson Johnson asked me to review. I guess it was shared on LinkedIn by Dennis Stackwitz. Um, went and found it and included that in your packet for correspondence, so I have a, have a, have a read of that.
You know, one thing I, I, I think was important, I, I don't know if I saw it in this article or what other art- article was, uh, this concept of what's affordable. Okay, the thirty percent of your gross income or whatever, I mean, I understand that part. But affordability is also gauged by, uh, a percentage of median income in the community. So, what's affordable is, is considered somewhere between thirty and eighty percent of what the median income is. So, I think that's something we ought to consider too when we're, when we're, and I'm sure that's, you know, it's gonna come up, but it's not just, okay, just thirty percent of what. but it's not just, okay, just thirty percent of what, no, because you can reduce even that to less than thirty percent of your income if you look at, okay, affordability means between thirty and eighty percent of what the median income. So the median incomes Marquette County is fifty-eight fifty-eight thousand a year, fifty-seven thousand, something like that. So what's thirty percent of that?
Not much.
Not much, right? Or what's forty percent of that? Okay, well, then you get a concept for what's affordable for people that are in that range.
Yeah, and you're gonna see that in Renovare's proposal. They break all that down.
Okay, good. Thank you.
To be able to afford a fairly affordable house, you have to have two incomes, and you probably should be making on a hundred thousand between those two incomes.
Yeah, and you could buy.
That's just average.
And what's affordable for that? About two hundred thousand dollars, right?
Two fifty.
And what's the square footage of a two-fifty house?
Well, it's not gonna be a very nice house for two fifty.
You know, actually, that's a, that's a, that's a misconception. And I think I mentioned this before. My daughter, she was working for the US justice system in Washington DC, her husband was in the military. They lived in Bethesda in a condo, and they had eight hundred and fifty square feet. And then they had a baby, okay, and they still were able to live there until the kid got, I don't know, two years, three years old. That was a start, I mean, of course, the price there of Bethesda was not affordable what it would be here, you know. But that was perfectly good. My wife is teaching down at University of Indiana, Bloomington. We rented a house for her down there. She's an eight hundred, she's got an eight hundred and fifty square foot house that's on a huge lot. The lot's three or four times bigger than the, than the, than the, than the house. It's eight hundred and fifty square feet, it's got uh two bedrooms, a living room, a kitchen, and a storage shed. And it's, and an office.
One story?
Huh?
One story?
One story, no basement. And for a young family, a couple or an individual, that's perfectly, that's perfectly livable. And you could buy something like that for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars maybe.
But these young families don't, don't want that if they can, if they can afford more.
I know, but we're talking about people who can't.
Well.
You know what I'm saying?
There aren't many people who, you know, when, if you have a little bit of money, you wanna build up and buy and build bigger and better, and, you know, then then your, then your house poor, because your loan is, your loan payment is so high.
We did some of those same things, you know, when, think about when you first got married, you wanted everything your parents had that it took them thirty to forty years to get.
Yeah.
You know, I I mean, I think, I think it was the quote "American dream," and you have to, I really do think younger people um have a different American dream than we did, and our dream was to be as well-off as our parents were the minute we started.
Yeah.
But I think younger people, I think you're gonna find that, Danny, I think my, I think my grandchildren, they're happy in a smaller space.
Right.
And they don't have to have a great big house.
That's what I'm saying.
For the, for the younger, younger.
For that, but I think people, I think, I, my daughter has a huge house. I I mean, you know, that's what they wanted. I have a eight, nine hundred and fifty-foot square condo in Florida, and I can tell you in my mind, it's not big enough, because I can hear that TV every place I go. Do you, do you know? So it's about your lifestyle. And and maybe young people will change, um, the way the world looks. You can only hope, I, you can only hope.
Wow.
I agree with the shop thing. I don't agree with the shopping shop. I agree with a laundromat and a small grocery store and a coffee shop.
I, I.
Well, that's my idea, but.
To borrow a cliche, I say build it small and they will come.
Yeah, yeah, and we'll see, you know, maybe those young people will fill that place.
You kind of don't have a choice anymore, you know, if you want to get, especially if you want to buy new, you have to build.
Or you have to re- remodel, and Steve can probably tell you it's as expensive to remodel as it is to build, and and people, um, you know, lumber's expensive.
Yeah, we just got a price to put average cabinets in a kitchen.
Oh.
Seventy-nine thousand.
What?
Shit. Seventy-nine thousand.
At Schwan's, yeah.
Gonna go buy a miner.
I said I'm keeping my cupboards. I really like them. Just put new doors up, okay?
Couldn't believe it.
Wow.
Well, you know, there, I don't, I don't know if any of you heard this, some of you might have, but um, there was a older person who lived on uh Island Beach Road.
Oh, they had a person.
Who listed her house, and her house was ki- kind of a tear-down, you know, if somebody wanted to. So it was four hundred thousand, you know, beautiful view of the lake and everything. She ended up getting eight hundred and fifty thousand for.
Oh, my gosh.
Yeah.
For just a lot?
Pretty much so.
To wipe the house out?
Pretty much so, and then they're gonna tear that down and build, so.
It's seeing lots of people that are changing the footprint of the community.
Yeah.
But that's what we wanted.
Well, that's, that's what's happening, and, you know, young doctor.
The people like that are gonna need uh other people who are gonna come out and fix their, do the plumbing. He's gonna come out and.
Trades.
And and plow the yard, mold the yard, do this, do that. Where are those people gonna live?
I don't know.
Where are the drywallers gonna live?
We're not even talking about that. We're talking about policemen, firemen, teachers, nurses.
Right, sure.
That's who's struggling.
Yeah.
Right, because your plumbers probably get paid more per hour than some of your teachers.
Well, the trades get paid well, but there's not enough people, yeah.
Anyways, we can't fix that today.
No.
But we can start.
Ages just haven't kept up with inflation and everything else.
Yeah, because your mom tell you his help can't buy help.
Whether you run away in NAFTA or, you know, whatever, but that was probably the start of it.
Mm-hmm.
You know, it's.
Well, there's, yeah, you've seen the, uh, you know, how much, you know, the upper tier makes, and the lower tier continues to go like this.
Yeah.
And then you've got, you know, housing prices and wages, which are another separating, um.
I always say it's the middle that struggles.
Yeah.
There's always stuff for the poor.
Always will be.
Anyways, the board report. Jim, am I next?
You are, you're up.
Okay, I'm so happy you're all getting the minutes now and the agendas. So um my only real comment then, other than what you see on there, is that the meetings are now on Wednesday at five-thirty on the first Wednesday and the third Wednesday of the month, so five-thirty, I know it's a bit early. Um, Carol Fulcher did come from the Trails Group, and she is retiring.
Oh.
Yeah, so they'll be looking for a new director. Um, any questions after you reading the minutes?
I did, but I can't remember what it was, though.
Yep, and I did just send everybody the um Michigan Township Association uh event in Traverse City, and it's in April. So if you see anything that really interests you, or a bunch of things, um.
You going that way?
Jason Allen says we have money, so, you know, for education, so.
Yes, uh, please take a look at that email that Linda sent to you uh this evening. There's, I always encourage, uh, if you have the means, to go and take in some education other than my own or Bradley Newman's. Um, the MTA conference is really neat. You can make some friends and and share stories about things that are happening in your community with other people that have other issues in their community. And oftentimes, they're a lot of the same stuff, so, um.
Who goes from your office?
Uh.
Who goes from here?
Um, we usually don't go to MTA. We go to the Michigan Association of Planning.
Oh.
And uh, and sometimes we go to the National Conference, but the township's one, uh, typically it's more directed for planning commissioners and board members than it is for staff.
Okay.
I'll take a peek.
Okay.
Yeah, even if you, you know, go down for a day or so, I don't know. Um, Rec Committee will meet next week. Uh, at their last meeting, they did take a look at two proposals to acquire land. One was the four hundred and sixty acres from energies, the other one was the suggestion from the Superior Watership Partnership. The Recreation Committee recommended to pursue that um as part of uh the acquisition program for twenty-twenty-three. That kind of stalled a little bit when I spoke with Carl, but I will re-investigate that tomorrow and ask the Rec Committee next week when they meet to perhaps reaffirm that. Um, and if so, then we'll bring it to the planning commission, and then the board to pursue or proceed with a grant application.
So you're saying that at the Recreation Committee meeting, they agreed to amend their five-year plan?
They did not agree to amend the plan. Not sure if we have to yet or not. Um, if we do have to, I'm not sure we're gonna get it done before.
February first. Okay, okay, but at least it's in the hop or something.
Right.
Okay.
Can you ask the Rec Committee if there's any interest from them to get a roof on that, I swear?
That's in our five-year plan. Yeah. Yeah.
I I'm thinking there, you just need to find the right person to ask.
Yeah, to help us out. That would be quite a span, but it is doable.
Could be used year-round.
Yeah, we could have farmers' markets, movies, you could have weddings in there, you could do all kinds of stuff. Uh, Road Committee report, I'll have to rely on Eric for that, but I believe they did meet last week, am I positive? Perhaps, no, maybe they didn't, because it was the first, I don't know, all he did is know.
May I ask you a question about the Rock Committee report?
Yeah.
Uh, I can't remember if it was word on the street or man about town. Uh, one of them was talking about the Scott property, about how you didn't get the grant for that.
Mm-hmm.
And so that's not a deal anymore, and it's off the table.
Not necessarily. Um, I have a, a phone call with them on Friday. I always like Friday phone calls for this reason. Um, they requested it. I think they're either gonna form a consortium of, like Chuck Oberstar, uh, Tom Swick himself, perhaps the movie theater people, perhaps um the apartments.
Not Crimmins.
I doubt it. No, not Crimmins. He doesn't have anything to do with this. Um, for some donations of some kind, the the Scots really want the park. They they had their heart set on it. So either if they do that, or if they offer the township a donation of land, that would be one other option, but it is not dead yet. So, that's thankful.
That's our sixteen acre park.
Yeah, which could be reduced, you know, perhaps, but.
Okay.
You just never know.
Fake media.
Well, I think if you start a fire, you know, and you keep it going, which, you know, they had to wait a whole year. I know that, you know, they're friends, because I'm friends with them on Facebook, so I know that they post stuff. In fact, her cover photo or whatever on Facebook was uh the concept for most of the year.
They want, they want their dad to.
So they, they do want to leave a legacy, and, you know, he's been sending me these fragmented texts late at night, um, just saying that they're still interested in doing something, so we'll see what happens. I'll keep you posted on that. I did not report that uh to the, to the Rec Committee. I only reported that, um, that we didn't get a grant and we transferred a nice letter of thank you, and so.
Should talk to Garrison and tell him to quit putting out that fake news on his blog.
Yeah, you know, um.
Which one does he?
Doug Garrison?
Yeah.
About which, he's into.
He's word on the street.
Yeah. I actually provided him the reasons that we didn't get the grant, but yet he didn't put it in there. He just said, you know, he didn't get it. But we have a higher median income. We're not part of a metropolitan area. And um, and and then they changed the the formatting of how much they give to acquisition versus how much they give to development. And acquisition got less. And then the entire fund was down by like nine percent last year, so the amount of money that was in there was also less. Unless you're in a trailhead, you know, developing a trailhead right now, it's really tough to get a grant.
Okay, Planning Zone Report.
Um, like, just today, like I said, I got the letter of interest from Renovare. There was no sale price included in it. Um, I've made them aware of what the price that the Township Board previously indicated was their sale price. Now the Township Board will have to take into consideration the, you know, social benefit to the community when and if they sell that piece to them. Um, but, yeah, you, I'll send that around. If it gets put on the board agenda for next Wednesday, which I'm anticipating it will, I will definitely send around that pamphlet to everybody. Actually, the first file that showed up today was like fifty-five megabytes, so I couldn't even have sent that to you, but I did shrink that down, so um I'll send it along. It's an exciting project. I relayed that in my email to John and Lynn today, that I was really excited about this and hope that, you know, it demonstrates what partnerships can do and how different funding mechanisms can be used to incur affordable housing or workforce housing. Um, beyond that, I know Eric's been working on business licenses, which should be wrapping up pretty soon, so those are all renewed. Um, the Innovations or Ottawa Innovations um should have their state license here within the next couple of weeks. Then we'll be issuing them their uh their medical and recreational processing um licenses through the township. Um, continuing to meet with people on property acquisition, which we talked about earlier, and then the two site plans we spent quite a bit of time with in the last week and a half.
Got Panera in Texas Roadhouse?
I can't tell you, but I think when you look at the elevations, when you get them, you're gonna see like a Texas flag on top of the steeple, which they didn't omit. Like, there's no signage on the building at all, but then they have a Texas flag on top.
Is somebody local that's doing that one?
Yeah, that is gonna be um the Crimmins. Yeah, that's, I mean, and their broker, Michael, Michael Conter, who um you guys have met before, he may be calling in from Ireland. So his daughter, I don't know, we've come to become friends, actually. I shouldn't say that, colleagues, uh, whatever. Um, but I appreciate it, because he's a very smart guy. And uh, anyway, his daughter is a zoologist, zookeeper kind of person, and she works in Cork. And uh Mike Conter's family, actually, it's his wife's family, are directly from Ireland. So he, they have dual citizenship, so he's over there, I think he left like two months ago, and he's gonna be there till May. And they're just renting a house in this beautiful town called Pincel, which Carol and I actually went to. Uh, very colorful buildings and really good restaurants, I guess. So, yeah, they're outside of Cork, but he may be calling in uh for that meeting, which would be extremely late. They're like six hours ahead, so, uh, but he'll be, he'll be ready for it if needed. So, yeah, you know, that, they are also trying to get approval for a fifteen thousand square foot um uh retail development that'll be adjacent to the restaurants, but they don't have any tenants yet. But I think the tenants will fill up quickly once they learn what's coming, you know, and what's adjacent to them, so that shouldn't be too long. So there'll be a seven thousand square foot restaurant and a fifteen thousand square foot retail. And the content of the last few conversations uh this week have been all about the approach from the east into their driveway, and how can we make that better, and how can MDOT sign off on that? So it it's, those aren't easy conversations to, because you're adding hundreds of thousands of dollars to the project, essentially. But they should have known that, because we told them after Panera was approved that you're gonna have to make an improvement to that driveway, because Panera even triggered that improvement. So now you're adding this, so they have to do something. They know they do.
Didn't look like a very good setup, the way it was laid out and driving. It didn't look like a parking lot. It was like a street or something, I remember.
Of course.
Yeah.
Well, the nice thing is, and you'll see on the site plan, that from essentially the Meyer gas station all the way over to the new restaurant, um, you'll be able to drive all the way across that, so you'll never have to get on the road. So some of that traffic will, they'll leave Meyer, leave Lowe's, and they'll just use the GFS drive. But the majority of the population base, obviously, is to the east, and so we have to accommodate that. And then you further complicate that with the continuous right turn lane off of County Road HQ, and the trucks merging and everything. It's a very short area to work with, and it will be modified from what the standards that MDOT would normally use, uh, but they've already conceded to that, and now it's just getting the developer and MDOT to work together to hammer something out prior to the site plan review, so that when we come here, all those, all that sausage is made and everything's done. Not, like I said, not easy conversations to have, but they know, they, it's just, it's what the developer's gotta do.
I don't know if you can talk about this, um, if you even know about it yet, but I've heard rumors from city people that Lakeview Arena isn't gonna be around much longer, and there's someone that's gonna donate land in Marquette Township to uh Ice Arena that's gonna be out here, and it'll be kind of taken over by a central sports authority.
Awesome.
From Marquette, Nishman, and Nagani, and they won't have the Nagani Ice Arena anymore or Lakeview and.
Yeah, I've kind of relayed that to you guys in the past, that there's been an interest.
I know Linda talked about it before, too, and.
People that.
Should have been done like that.
People been saying that.
Do you know who the property owner is?
No, I don't. Do you know?
At one, at one time, well, at one time, um, Peter Navarro was supportive of some of that, but you know.
So he wasn't gonna give it, he was just gonna lease it then.
Well, maybe.
He leases everything.
Yeah, but maybe not, you know, he's aging, we're all aging. Yeah, who knows?
Yeah.
Who knows?
Well, that's interesting. So they're gonna demo?
Well.
I don't know if they're gonna demo, they're just, it's not gonna be. An ice arena.
Yeah, unfortunately.
It's in the master plan coming up.
We should have, uh, yeah, we, we should have got, uh, there a long term on that. You know, unfortunately, the hockey community built Lakeview Arena with lots of donations and lots of time.
Yep.
And I don't feel that, um, that hockey community's ever been supported by Lakeview Arena's management.
By the city, you mean?
Yeah, I don't not feel it has.
Well, kind of in a way they have.
Well, they've subsidized it.
Yeah.
Well, that, that's, I used to call that funny math, they have funny math.
Well, but I know what you mean by taking ownership of it and being proud and championing.
Well, no, 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 they have funny math in budgeting before, we have all, I was way too involved, I'm done, I'm done with hockey. I mean, I'm done with being on that board, yeah, there was a lot of things done that shouldn't have been done, that's for sure.
No.
Anyways, actually the plaster belonged to the community and we gave that away to the university, so I don't know what we were thinking. Yeah, and Memorial Field, we gave that away, I mean, you know, what were we thinking, the city's giving away.
This is way before Bob Haney was around too, wow.
See, there were people then. And you thought it was just that.
Well, then, you know, you, you can also say most of the arena was built for Northern.
Oh, my gosh, yeah.
You know, that huge addition on there and then they just.
I said they couldn't play in the sandbox, could they?
Yeah.
Those people, yeah. Jim and I like, we're in the hockey days, so.
Well, Comley, Rick Comley's first, uh, idea was to build a new volleyball, basketball to get that out of the Berry.
Yeah, he's gonna do that.
I'm sure he will.
Yeah, but we had to tear it, we had to, well, anyways.
Yeah.
Well, that's already in the works.
Yeah, I, I definitely saw a rendering of that recently.
Marquette tears its history down.
The whole country's tearing history down.
Yeah, well, Marquette's good at it, they turn lots down, but, uh, uh, we'll keep going or we'll be here.
So, anyway, you didn't know anything about that though, but there's nothing.
Not yet.
Nothing, no.
Okay. Alright, any announcements from anyone?
So I have a kind of an announcement, on Monday at three thirty, the Township Board is gonna meet in a work session to discuss Township events. So in the past, Marquette Township has financially supported, um, three events. The car show, the, uh, what, what is it?
Tree lighting and.
The tree lighting and the event at Lions, is it called Lions Field?
Community Days.
Community Days. So that's all going to change, um, starting this year, and I don't know what it's gonna look like.
Less or more?
I, I don't know that.
Oh.
Yeah, we don't know that.
This is a work session to decide.
It's a work session to decide where we wanna go with that.
There wasn't even a tree lighting this year, was there? Cause there was no tree.
There was a tree lighting, um, and actually the tree was donated by Meister's Tree Farm. It was very small, but, you know, we had a lot of issues with the trees in the past. So it was just different and the mall was still filled with small children going to see Santa and hot chocolate and hot dogs and candy games or.
Great.
Yeah, so.
Is there a way they could have Santa there every day, so that you could get more people in there and the mall?
That would be a mall thing.
Only then get people in there.
Malls are changing.
Oh, God, yeah.
Yeah, we could have.
Oh, is that North Iron Church, is that ready to open or?
I don't believe so, I just drove through there today on my way to get groceries after work and, uh, I mean, the entire parking lot's full of snow.
Yeah?
They're doing it themselves is what I heard.
Volunteer, yeah.
So, yeah. So that was my announcement.
Okay, anyone else? Public comment, no public here, so no public comment. Additional comments by planning commissioners?
I'm good.
I'm good.
Good.
You too. Okay, then we're adjourned. At eight fifty-two.
Alright.
All the information today.
Yeah.
Not my road, but on.
It's nice when there's nobody here to harass us and you can. We can get a lot more talked about.
Oh, they add a lot of music.
So now they built, um, a shed on one.
Oh, really?
Yeah, that's against all the rules, right?
Yeah, structures that can be separated by ten five thirty. What's the address?
You'll drive down, we'll say it's by the tree lighting people.
Cat gets me up at four thirty.
But you know, I can just imagine people are gonna just be storming. I, I don't know what they're doing.
Oh, yeah. Cat, well, yeah, well, cat, cat, you jump up on a bed, something will jump on you first and then you'll start piling. If you don't get up with it right away, if he goes.
Sounds like I'm gonna need you on that.
Work session in here?
And then there's cat.